Welcome everyone to our Weaver County Commission meeting. Today is Tuesday, August 5th. I'm Commissioner Sharon Bowles. I'm joined by Commissioner Gage Forrester, Commissioner Jim Harvey. We will invite the audience to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And after that, we'll have our invocation of Roman of Silence offered by Ricky Hatch. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America's stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our kind Father in Heaven, we are grateful this morning for the comfortable lives that we leave, that we lead. And we are thankful to be able to live in this part of the world with its beauty and with the camaraderie we share with such a wonderful community. We are grateful for the concept of stewardship and liberty and freedom and government by the people and recognize this public forum where we discuss the affairs of the people as evidence of your inspired constitution and a chance for the citizens of Weaver County to have a voice and to be aware of business that is conducted by the representatives of the citizens. We pray for wisdom today for all of those participating, that they can make their decisions based off of good principles. And we're grateful for those who serve in capacities as elected officials, as county and government employees, as well as those who serve in their homes and businesses and communities. We ask now that thy Spirit be with us and we pray for this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Item D on our agenda is Commissioner Comments. There's an employee recognition, but I think we're going to delay that until next week. There's a little miscommunication. So Commissioners, do you have any comments? I know you do. It's regarding our apparel.
Well, I'd like to talk just a moment, Madam Chair, about two things. One, first off, this is each week, our Here's Egyptian Theater or Ogden Musical Theater. Ogden Musical Theater is a theater group that we, this body, along with Culture Parks and Recreation, but especially Cassie Bybee and Mari Tarbox, local gal, they've started this Ogden Musical Theater. There have been a host of people that serve on that board and they shouldn't be left out as well, that have perpetuated fantastic theater. This year's theater is Annie, the production Annie. All three of us, I think, now have seen that. The people who've seen it down in Hale and down at the Salt Lake, they like our production better. They think the talent's better. They think the production's better. And I didn't see the one in Salt Lake, but I've seen it in other parts of the United States. Ours is fantastic. The voices, the talent. If you haven't got a chance to see that, you should probably go this week because it ends this week, or you might be able to catch it again in your next lifetime. But it's really, really good. The next thing is, is the reason we're dressed like this is this is the week of our county celebration, the Weaver County Fair. It opens tomorrow, the 6th, and goes every day, 11 to 11 until Saturday. We encourage all of you to attend the fair. It's a fantastic experience. And especially put a plug in for the Junior Livestock Show on Saturday morning. What a great experience that is where young people beginning at age eight or nine get to start showing animals and they take the sale of the money from those animals and they put it towards their education. So a fantastic experience. You'll need to register before that auction on Saturday, but it's just a great thing. And all of us have had the chance to participate, but it's going to be a phenomenal experience. And so, one other thing that's just a highlight is we have on Friday night what's called Bull Fighters Only. Many of you have been to a rodeo and it's amazing to watch those guys that are on the ground when they let the bulls out. Well, this is a collection of those guys, all in one place. It's televised. It's the last competition that these guys have before they go into the world championships. And so, we get, they actually, they try some pretty amazing things, stunts. Any guy that wants to stand out in front of a 2,000 pound animal that's coming at you with horns, well, there's a statement on Forrest Gump that talks about that, but I won't go into that. I just, it's amazing. So, all right, that's my, those are my comments, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Great. Commissioner Forrester.
Well, I would second your discussion about the horns and not being in a good spot, personally experienced, but I also second your thought on the Annie. Great production, amazing talent. But I'd also bring up, we also have, we talked about all the opportunities we have here in Weaver County between Recreation, our plays, but we hosted the Corn Fairy PGA Golf Event this past week at our own Ogden Golf and Country Club. Great event. For those that attended, I think that they were very impressed with the transportation, with the facilities, condition of the golf course. And if you talk to any of the players, without exception, they thought it was one of the best venues that, from a personal standpoint, that they've been able to participate in. We actually had, oh, I don't know, four or five local golfers that participated. It was fun to see them out. So, if you miss that, I think it more than likely will come back again next year. We don't know for sure, but a great opportunity for us to enjoy professional golf and to welcome that group. A lot of, quite a few people from outside Ogden that were there also were very impressed with the facilities and the opportunity they had to enjoy PGA Golf. Great, you know, and with the fair coming up, you know, how much better does it get than that?
That's right. Great couple of weeks here in Weaver County. Thank you Commissioners. Okay, item E on our agenda, agenda related public comments. This is an opportunity for those in attendance to give comments to the Commission. No action may be taken on these if it's later in the agenda. We do have a public hearing, so if it's related to that, we'd ask that you wait at that time. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward on a different item? Seeing none, we'll move to item F, consent items. Number one, request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $201,543.14. Number two, request for approval of warrants, numbers 105606 through 105656 and 492282 through 492379 in the amount of $2,628,973.03 for a summary of warrants and purchase orders. Ricky Hatch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We issued 12 purchase orders this week for $202,000. Seventy percent of that amount, or $142,000, is for the transfer station to work on the ramp for the truck scale. Twenty percent, or $40,000, is for the conference center and that is to obtain contracted labor. As far as warrants, we issued 149 checks this week for $2.6 million. Just over a quarter of that amount was for the jail to go towards medical care as well as utilities and food. Another quarter, or $657,000, is for the 12th Street construction project that was paid for with the local transportation tax. Thirteen percent, or $347,000, was for paramedic services. Eight percent, or $205,000, was for construction on both Comby Road and Skyline Drive, and this is paid for by local sales tax dollars as well. And seven percent, or $190,000, is for improvements at the ice sheet. The top five vendors that we paid this week, Staker and Parsons Company, $668,000. Vital Core Health Strategies, $478,000. Post Asphalt Paving and Construction, $205,000. Ogden City Corporation, $171,000. And Upstage Crew Services for $144,000.
Any questions for Mr. Hatch?
None for me, thank you, Madam Chair.
Not, I'm ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion. We approve those consent. Wait, 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 why don't we finish those?
Let's do that. I had some notes on the other ones, but yeah, sorry, I gotta head on myself. Item four, request for approval of new business licenses. Number five, request for approval of revision to HR Policy 4-700 Wellness Program and Incentives. Number six, request for approval of revision to HR Policy 3-600 Discipline. Number seven, request for approval of a retirement agreement buying between Weaver County and Daniel Brown. Number eight, request for approval of a contract buying between Weaver County and Nelson Homes, allowing Nelson Homes to improve roadway crossings over the top of the Bureau of Reclamation, land drains that already exist in the JDC development. Before I look for a motion, I just wanted to make a comment about items five and six. Emily Wild is here from our HR department and I just want to publicly thank her and her team for working on those adjustments that needed to be made. One of them benefits our employees in that they're able to get a reimbursement for gym attendance at more than just two gyms, so wherever they choose to go to workout, which is good for our employees. And the other one is an error in discipline ordinance that, or policy that we had that we needed to make a change to so that we don't run into some issues that we've had recently. So I just appreciate them always being on top of that.
Great changes.
So with that, I'm ready for a motion.
I'll make that motion now, Madam Chair. F1 through and including eight, the consent items we approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item G, public hearings. Number one, I need a motion to adjourn the public meeting and convene a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're now in a public hearing. For item two, request for approval of an ordinance and development agreement for the proposed Westbridge Meadows Development, a master planned community that will rezone approximately 1,400 acres of property located within the area south of the Union Pacific Railroad between the Weaver River and 7500 West. The zones being proposed include a master planned development overlay zone, MPDOZ, and a variety of single family dwelling, R1, two family dwelling, R2, and multi-family dwelling, R3 zones, as well as the form-based zone, FB Mixed Uses, and the open space O1 Zone. Charlie Urt.
Commissioners, thank you. I wasn't aware that we weren't presenting on Zoom. I've got a big, beautiful presentation for you and I'm afraid I probably can't show you, but it's not any new information than what you already have in your hands. I did want to display kind of the timeline of this project and how long it's been in the process, but I could just do that. So what you have in front of you, you've got two items. You've got a development agreement request and you've got a rezone request. And that's for a substantial amount of property in the county, about 1,500 acres. And that is west of the Weaver River, south of the railroad tracks, between the railroad tracks and the Ogden Bay, WMA area. This is a product of about two, well, probably closer to four or five years of discussion, but two years of negotiation. The application came in January 1st of 2024 and we've had a wide variety of public work sessions, as well as a couple of public hearings, this public hearing and a public hearing with the planning commission. In fact, we've had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen public meetings and several of those being public comment meetings as well. So lots of opportunity for discussion amongst the public and with the planning commission and the commission with this public hearing today. The request for the rezone is to rezone property to a variety of different zones, a lot of the residential zones. This applicant was instrumental in helping us revise our residential code. Our residential code was probably written in the 50s about the time that we adopted our zoning codes. And I can't imagine we've done a whole lot of improvements to that since the 50s, since we have very, very small amounts of property within those residential zones as it stands now. However, with the help of the applicant, we've rewritten the residential zones. So we now have an R115 zone with a density of about 2.9 units to the acre. We have, we had before and we continue to have an R112 and an R110 zone with respective densities a little bit lower, or a little bit higher than the 2.9. And then now we have an R15 zone with a density that is equivalent to about one dwelling unit every 5,000 square feet. And we did that for two reasons, because we needed modernized zones to keep pace with what a variety of different developers are asking us for, but also to implement the general plan. And it just so happened that this developer, Redwood, was in our general plan, liked what he was seeing, what they were seeing, and proposed a number of changes to the residential zone that complied with the general plan. And you guys made that decision last, I think it was last October, November, to approve those changes. So that was part of this timeline as well. Prior to that, prior to 2024, back in 2021, 2022, the applicant was actually working with the county while we were working on our Western Weaver General Plan. And so, what the applicant is proposing today is in compliance with the Western Weaver General Plan. They got a little lucky, they got in at the right time, asking the right questions, and the general plan fully anticipates this development. The project is a, intended to be a 50-year project. There is a very thick economic analysis regarding the project. I did not include that in your packet. I figured it was long enough as it is, but the applicant has done a pretty robust review of the next 30 to 50 years' worth of improvements in the area. The idea behind the general plan supporting this development, the idea behind the applicant proposing it, is there's a big need for housing in our area. We know that we have a deficit of about 30,000 to 35,000 dwelling units. And despite the fact that that number came out a few years ago, we're finding that we are still keeping pace with that deficit. We were getting enough growth along the Wattsatch Front to render a lot of the decisions to increase densities and increase growth in areas, equalize that balance. And so, we're still kind of keeping pace with our deficit. We're not seeing housing prices come down significantly as a consequence of that. It's a supply and demand question. We also know that the general plan talks about providing communities where people who live there can go through all stages of life, from newlyweds to the nearly deads and the children that come from those relationships. This development is intended to provide that wide variety of housing. Using our R, our new R zones, the applicant has proposed that wide variety to be intermixed and intermingled amongst those different residential areas that you can see on the zone mapping and packet. That doesn't mean that anything goes, that there's still a requirement that there is a density transition from 7500 West, where there's existing residential, large lot residential, towards the core, the center of this project going eastward. The intention is for density to step down from about 2.9 units to the acre all the way to where the core is, where there's a possibility of potentially getting some stacked residential or some attached residential, so potentially condos, apartments and town homes, with the intention obviously being protecting the existing community that's out there, providing that larger lot buffer on the periphery. They're also asking for the form-based zone. One caveat to the form-based zone that is written in the development agreement is the county offering them that form-based zone is a nod in the right direction, a nod towards mixed-use residential and commercial in their planned village zones. I say a nod, but not approval because the development agreement says that until they've got a street regulating plan that goes with that form-based zone, they can't do anything in those form-based zone areas. So it's quite a bit of acreage in those form-based areas. Their intention is to do everything from a little bit higher density residential all the way to big blocks, commercial and everything. They're hoping to provide an integrated community where you've actually got people who live in the same places that commercial opportunities happen. We're finding through various types of advocacy for zoning reform on a national level that we've kind of been zoning for the last 100 years a little bit wrong. And a little bit wrong means that we are completely separating people and where they live from the services that they rely on. And so, some people like that, some people like living in subdivisions that are in the suburbs, but we're finding that a lot more people would really like to live in a community that provides for their work, their live, their play opportunities. And it just ironically so, our general plan makes that statement, that we want to support communities with live, work, play opportunities. So that means having houses and having residential opportunities mixed in with those commercial services and those community services, recreational services, et cetera. The requested number of units over the 50-year lifespan of the project is 13,199. I like round numbers, so I rounded that up to 13,200. The development agreement does dictate how those can be laid out. So as I mentioned, on the periphery, you're going to have larger lot sizes going towards a central core, which will have smaller lot sizes or potentially stacked residential. This is all going to be market-based as far as how quickly they develop. They believe they've got the market to do, well, best case scenario, 30 years build out. Worst case scenario, they're thinking 50 years build out. A lot of different variables that go into that. And so, as we were working on this, we wanted to make sure we didn't hamstring the county by making promises that we're going to regret a few years down the road. So one thing you'll find in the development agreement, as well as in your staff report, is we've got a table of development triggers for infrastructure improvements. We want to make sure that the developer, not the taxpayer, is responsible for making infrastructure improvements that are resulting from the advent of their development. One thing we noticed is we went on a field trip with the applicant to some Utah County developments. One of the first things I noticed was the road that got to one of the developments was really important. And the further research on that indicated that it was the city who made the commitment to make those improvements to that roadway. What we're asking of this developer is to provide those improvements as their development is installed. Now, we're not going to ask them to provide all the street improvements that are the result of all the other development that may be going on out west, but the improvements along 2550, 1800 South and the 12th Street Corridor. We are asking that as those improvements are warranted and needed, this applicant put in their fair share, help out with those costs. We did put together a timeline, not necessarily chronological timeline, but based on triggers. At a certain point, they're going to need to make improvements to 12th Street, 1200, the 900, 1200 South Corridor. And they're going to need to make improvements to, it's probably going to be 2550, either 2550 Corridor or 1800 Corridor. The agreement talks about improvements from 1900 West to their project. Now, that we wouldn't be requiring brand-new lanes and brand-new intersections from this applicant from 1900 to their project, but we are asking for their proportionate share of that capacity increase on those roadways. The request and the requirement, actually, that's in the development agreement, says before 12th Street needs to be increased to a three, above a three-lane roadway. Before improvements need to be made to bring it above a three-lane roadway, the applicant is required to put in an access to this project on either 2550 or 1800. We do give them the choice. We're being told that right now it really looks like 2550 is the best option for the first roadway. That roadway will need to be put into the county standard and county standard is in the development agreement. If you flip to the back of that agreement, and you'll see that we're looking at a major collector or minor arterial for 2550 from 4700 West to their project and 1800 from 4700 West to their project. On the other side of 4700 West, there's already some residential areas, so we're not necessarily looking at arterial improvements there. We'd probably still be looking at either major or minor collector street improvements. Long-term, short-term, let's go short-term. We need to support the traffic that's going to be coming to this project from I-15 Corridor. That's going to be the primary route. So in the beginning, it's going to be 900 and 1200 Corridor, then 2550, then 1800. And the point of those three is you've got a connection. As soon as in West Haven, they've got a mess curve that's going to be going in on 1800, connected down to Wilson Lane. So you'll have freeway offering that'll go straight down 1800 to this project and then same thing with 2550, just like you have for 12th Street. What that means in short-term is we just want to make sure those roadways stay improved to adequate capacities. When we talk about capacities, the engineers say that you need to start making improvements when you approach the bottom side of Level of Service D. Level of Service D is quite a bit of traffic. We've asked the applicant to do a Level of Service C. Once we start to leave Level of Service C and enter D, that's where we're expecting roadway improvements to be made. So we're going to be paying attention, very close attention to that on 12th Street especially because right now that's the only way in and out. In order to even start developing, they will need to build a bridge over the Weaver River, either at 1800 or 2550 or somewhere in between for their emergency egress. The development agreement agrees to a certain number of residential units using the primary access of 12th Street and 7500 West, as long as there is an improved and paved egress that crosses the river. It doesn't have to be built to the full county standard, but it has to be built to fire safety standards. So Fire Chief will dictate that. They would be, in my opinion, foolish to build a bridge that doesn't meet the needs of their future development over that river. And so, I suspect that bridge is going to be fully compliant and fully up to standard for a three-lane road. But the asphalt portion from the river that goes back to the 4700 West and the asphalt portion that's inside their development from the river to wherever their phase scene is happening, those would be, at the very least, emergency egress. They would need to be open for public use at all times. And so, they just might not be the full asphalt cross-section that the final product will result in. As the developer makes improvements along that roadway, that egress corridor then at that time will be asking for the full width improvements, curb, gutter, sidewalk, shoulders, street trees, all of the above. Inside their development, they're asking for some flexible street cross-section standards. They've got some ideas of cross-sections that they've done in other projects, so we toured some of those, Planning Commission toured some of those. And really, the county's only concern that I think the applicant has resolved is if we don't have the manpower, we don't have the machinery, we don't have the ability to maintain and operate those roadways, what happens then? And that's just a matter of, right now, we've mostly got rural roads and we're driving down as quick as we can, throwing stuff as quick as we can. So we've got certain with plow blades, we've got certain with lanes, et cetera. If we're talking about doing something different than the county's rural residential standard, then there may be an additional cost to doing that. Development agreement says that they bear the difference of that cost. So it's either coming out of the developer's pocket or it's coming out of an HOA's pocket, or the HOA is the one who operates and maintains those public streets. We've also agreed that they can do private streets and they could build those private streets to the standards that they've proposed in here. We've identified what needs to be public and what can be private, but it's also written that those private streets need to be public thoroughfares. So even though they're not county-operated, maintained or owned, the public will use them. So you're not going to have a lot of super secluded exclusionary areas in here. The intention is to keep it open for community building and community connectivity as opposed to finding ways to make things exclusive and sell at the highest dollar. Which, by the way, when you do a community building that way, you are generally speaking from market perspective, creating a community that does sell at a better value than just having these exclusive little hamlets of private roads with gates. You'll have, with private roads and gates, you'll have some higher-end homes, but when you have higher-end homes mixed in with a variety of other homes and you do that at a scale that are all connected together, the whole community value base increases. If you were to look at the studies on that, you would see that for the most part, from a community perspective, taxable value on everything goes up at that point, more so than if you had some exclusive hamlets and some areas, you know, apartments over here and exclusive mansion hamlets over here. It just doesn't work out the same way. Obvious questions, infrastructure. We talked a little bit about streets. As far as water and sewer goes, approval of the development agreement is not approval of the development. It's just basically your consent that they can go start spending money to figure out whether the development is feasible. They, if you were to approve the development agreement and approve the rezone, at that point, they will start putting money into engineering. I say start, they've actually already started. They feel like they've created a good relationship with the county and so they've got some at their own risk that's not even happening. But as soon as you guys, if you do give them approval for what they're asking for, that frees up a frees up a lot of financial opportunities for them to go out and chase down those infrastructure costs. Talking about a heavy lift for sewer, heavy lift for water. There's already a water district out there. Development agreement doesn't specify which sewer entity or which water entity they need to use for the project. We do know that Warren West Warren wants to serve the project, at least wants the opportunity to do so. The development agreement says you're not getting a subdivision plat approved until you have sewer and water go figure that out. Central, or excuse me, Little Mountain Sewer, they're talking about potential expanding and maybe picking up sewer service lines in this area. The applicant is aware, and the development agreement states, that the county is not agreeing to be the sewer service collector. Doesn't mean that we can't be or we won't be, it's just we're not agreeing to be. We have, on the east side of the river, generally agreed to be in the sewer business for developers, that we will have sewer service lines that collect and deliver to Central Weaver Lines, but we haven't jumped the river just yet. And so we haven't made any promises, but doesn't mean we can't. Just, they've got to figure it out if we don't. Same with water. As far as drainage goes, the project has some wetlands in it, and it has some floodplain deliveries in it. The applicant is very well aware that, well, county's development code doesn't say you can't build in a floodplain. It just says if you do, you've got to do it to this standard. The development agreement says you can't build in a floodplain. So they have agreed to go above and beyond what the county default is to say they won't build in the floodplain. Instead, what they're planning on doing is addressing those floodplain areas with FEMA to come up with a mitigation plan so they can actually be removed from floodplain. That's probably going to involve a lot of fill in some locations and a lot of excavation in other locations, because you can't just fill in a floodplain and say that it's no longer a floodplain. All that does is displaces water into everybody else's property. If you're going to fill in a floodplain area, you need to provide a different place for that water to go, so you're not actually increasing water flow onto other properties. Sewer, water, drainage. As far as wetland mitigation goes, they've done some cursory wetland review of the property. Not as much wetlands out there as is on the Army Corps maps, but there are some. And there's definitely going to need to be some wetland mitigation that occurs. In cooperation with the Division of Wildlife Resources, on the Ogden Bay WMA, the applicant has been proposing to try and mitigate or offset any impact they may have within the development by enhancing the water valve habitats with wetlands closer to the WMA. It's possible and probably likely, but there's going to be a few locations, the developer's just going to say, you know, that wetland's probably better to stay there, especially as they find ways to drain the property appropriately for their development. They might find some spots where a pond or, you know, something is already there where they may want to encourage that wetland to be what it is, or maybe even expand, in order to accommodate the loss of other wetlands on the property. And in those cases, they're having some discussions with DWR even about opportunities for operations and management of those wetlands area. If the DWR doesn't want to do it, HOA will do it, and that's written in the agreement as well. From a parks perspective, they worked with the West Warren Parks District, Warren West Warren Park District, and the Warren, West Warren Park District didn't have a small ask, but this isn't a small request from the developer. So all said and done, from a general plan perspective, general plan is asking that each developer contribute ten acres of open space per one thousand residents. It doesn't specify how much of that ten acres of open space has to be completed, open space in terms of groomed park area, but it does talk about the need for nature parks, groomed parks, trails and walkway corridors that can all be enjoyed by the public. So there is quite a bit of acreage in the project. I can't remember offhand, but I think it's close to four hundred acres of open space that's going to be in the project. The development agreement says that they agree, no less than sixty percent of that will be groomed open space, so.
Say that again?
No less than sixty percent of their contributed open space will be groomed open space. So forty percent could be natural wetlands, habitat, or natural walkways, you know, stuff like that, trails. Other parts of that need, sixty percent of that open space. Sixty percent of the ten acres per thousand needs to be groomed open space, and the developer's responsible for the financial cost of donating that, those properties and building those recreational facilities. There are three large parks, region parks, well, community and regional parks that the park district has requested. One is right along the riverway. The park district conceptualizes that in the future as being a large regional park that serves not just this community, but the unincorporated area in general. They're looking at a big park complex that could actually go in that location. There's another location that's more of a development-wide or a neighborhood-wide park. Actually, there are three. There's a small, there's a medium, and a large park that's being proposed. Development agreement would require them to donate their proportionate share of open space per plat, and so on a lot-by-lot basis, if we're talking about ten acres per thousand, we're talking about, what is that, ten acres per three hundred and thirty-three residences or lots, right? So if they came in with three hundred and thirty-three lot subdivision, at that point, they would need to, at that time, set aside ten acres, either within the subdivision or without. The agreement says that fifty percent of that open space acreage will be contributed to open space inside the subdivision. The other fifty percent will go towards those large park facilities. That way, we're growing the amount of property, the park district or the county, whoever it is that owns the larger parks, we're growing that at a commensurate scale, as we are the small open space pockets that are inside of those subdivisions. Park district said, we don't really want to be in the business of operating and maintaining small park properties. And so they'd like the big facilities, the smaller ones can be HOA-owned and operated. Applicant has also committed to the development agreement that the parks will be, while they may be owned by the county, they may be owned by the park district, we're not sure, they can be operated and maintained by the applicant, the developer, or the HOA until the time that that public agency assumes responsibility for that space if they do.
Sheriff Fine Abbot, six six two.
So the way that works is as they are required to implement and plat open space, they would do that in favor essentially of the county, unless the county suggests that we want that to be in favor of the park district. We can't force, obviously, the county, they can't force the county to take it, we can't force the park district to take it, so it still needs to be willing, county willing, park district. The development agreement is written in a way that says if neither of us are willing to take it, then the developer gets to hang on to it. It still needs to be open space owned, operated by the HOA. But I think we've got a motivated park district on this. The developer did want to have some fail safes put in there just in case the park district or the county isn't super motivated to operate and maintain open spaces despite the fact that we're requiring them. So if either of us choose not to take over ownership of those, the applicant could still do so, and it still has to be open space. River corridor. So the general plan and the county ordinance talks about three hundred-foot river corridor, and we've talked about that, I think, ad nauseam, so you guys know how that's working. The applicant has asked for that to be reduced to a hundred feet from three hundred. Given the fact that they're going to need to do a lot of river work and a lot of floodplain mitigation, a lot of wetland mitigation, I have every expectation that it's going to be in their best interest to have most of that along that river frontage, a lot of that along the river frontage. Now, we have asked that they find a quick and efficient way to drain, especially if it's a flood year, to get water out of the Weaver River channel, away from the bay and straight to the lake. And I don't mean away from the bay, that's assuming that the bay is at full capacity. This way, that this development and the county upstream residents are not wholly dependent on DWR opening the gates. At times that we want them to, or, excuse me, at times that they choose to, we can open some of those drainage gates that go around at times that we think it's appropriate, and we would do that in concert with DWR. So just providing a way to help mitigate both upstream and downstream flooding. Along the riverway, this developer has proposed to grade, grade back the riverbank. A number of those places, if you would have float down that area, I'm told I haven't floated it yet, some of those walls, those river walls, banks are really high and really steep, which isn't very conducive for a public corridor, park corridor. So the applicant has offered to grade some of those back, lay those banks down, re-vegetate those areas as part of their open space contribution. And then obviously, a trail corridor that we discussed, the Emerald Necklace, they're committed to doing a portion of that as well. Reducing from three hundred down to the one hundred, I still think there's still going to be a lot in there that's more than a hundred, like I mentioned, but that also, the applicant has argued that that gives them the opportunity to give more meaningful open spaces in other places in the development, assuming they don't need to commit it to that for flood and drainage. Along the DWR property, the applicant has agreed to a term in the agreement that says that they will not do any development within three hundred feet of the DWR property for a period of one year, giving the DWR or anglers, or probably not anglers, birders and hunters and nonprofits the opportunity to put together the resources and potentially purchase easement. It commits them to working in good faith with folks who want to purchase easement or purchase the property one way or the other. It doesn't dictate how much the property needs to be sold for, or how much easement needs to be sold for, it just says, hold the property for a year, I'll develop on it, and let's see if these guys can put together some money to reserve that three hundred feet. If not, if the three hundred feet isn't purchased, reserved, or whatever, the applicant will build fence, a no-climb fence, along the DWR boundary. And for the portion that you can see on their master plan, that northern-east-west border, the DWR property kind of does a Utah cutout, and it's on the northern border, they are going to provide a two-hundred-foot minimum open space buffer there. That two-hundred-foot open space buffer is for the future purpose of a possible highway connecting to the inland port area. General plan talks about, and this is long-term, we're probably talking about forty, fifty years down the road, having some opportunity to build a highway that connects maybe over to eighty-three hundred West. I know economic development in the port currently working on funding to get a railroad bridge at eighty-three hundred. So if this highway corridor ever goes in, you may be able to see a loop that goes out to eighty-three hundred to collect a little bit more of that traffic from the inland port. Otherwise, I think we can anticipate eighteen hundred or Twenty-Five Fifty being that primary corridor. Speaking of highways, they have agreed to set aside and donate a three-hundred-foot wide strip of property that runs through the entirety of the project to be donated to the county for us to hold for the possible opportunity of having the legacy corridor, what are we calling it, the northern extension of the Davis Port. We obviously need to do some more studies to find out where that alignment is going to go, but the applicant's committed to keeping that open. There is a period of time in the document where it basically says if it's clear that that freeway is going somewhere else, that we will work with the applicant to get that acreage back into that applicant's hands, so the applicant can then go forward and figure out what they want to do with that acreage. None of this changes the density. The request for the thirteen thousand two hundred units stays the same regardless of how much open space or how little open space, how many highways, how little highways. What that does is that gives the opportunity to kind of smooth out, move around, how their development is laid out without losing development rights because they're offering community benefits, right? Oftentimes, well, one of the biggest challenges and one of the biggest blindsides for developers getting through the subdivision process, thinking they've got a hundred lots, and it turns out they need a bigger detention facility, and so they're losing two or three lots on that. Now, if you're looking at it from that perspective, that's administrative, that's just, that is what it is, and they need to follow the code. On this side, on this perspective, this is legislative. We're setting new rules for this development, and so there's a bit of a negotiation, and that was one of the things that we discussed. More open space, they don't lose density, it's just more benefit to the community. I think that's my presentation. I think I hit it all. Any questions for me?
Commissioners, I know that you've been taking notes as I have. Would you like to have a public hearing before you mention your?
Yeah, I'd prefer to hear from the public first.
Okay.
What's the total acreage again, Charlie?
Total acreage is just about fourteen hundred acres.
Thank you.
And one more thing to take note of, if you look at the graphic in the development agreement or in the rezone, there is a little piece of property, it's about four parcels up next to the railroad, that was originally proposed to be in the project. It looks like landowners are requesting to be pulled out. So you'll see a little notch next to the railroad there. That doesn't mean that the development agreement won't apply to that property if they were, if the applicant was to pick it up, but we don't want to, unless you guys want to, we don't want to force anyone into a rezone.
Charlie, is that this right here? Can you see that?
Yeah, it's the green one at the top.
Okay.
Dark green.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then, item three, thanks, don't go far. Public comments, we'd invite anybody in the public who would like to speak to this to come forward at this time. No one from the back row? Okay. And we'll move on to item four, which is a motion to adjourn public hearings and reconvene the public meeting.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're now back in our public meeting for action on the public hearings. Commissioners, floor.
Thank you, madam. Sure I do have a couple of comments if I might. So, Charlie, you mentioned this is a fifty-year project.
Yep.
Is that pretty accurate, you think, in terms of?
I think so, and that's, thirty years would be ambitious, assuming that the market stays or is great for the next thirty years, but I think the applicant has mentioned fifty years is probably more realistic, given the ups and downs of the.
Yeah, based on that number, I don't disagree. Well, commissioners, fifty years ago, in this county, I can say from personal experience, you could actually buy a nice three-bedroom home on Ogden East Bench for about twenty thousand dollars. Today, that same home would probably be close, very similar to five to six hundred thousand. Forty years ago, you could buy a nice home in West Haven, but it actually wasn't West Haven, and it was called Wilson, just to be completely accurate, for about ninety thousand on a one-acre lot. You can't do that today. So this is, you know, I think, a fairly aggressive move for the developers, but at the same time, and we've questioned this a lot, we've had a lot of discussion, if we have an opportunity to put development out west to supply housing for future generations, I'm talking twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years down the road, and make that housing attainable, this project makes sense to me with certain conditions, which I think you've talked about. Without those conditions, no. But I think with what we have here in Weaver County is an opportunity for economic development with Stephanie, the inland port, one thing we always strive for is, from economic development, if we can let people stay in Weaver County to live, work, and play, right now, we're transporting somewhere between fifty to, depending on the numbers, seventy thousand people a day that drive from Weaver to Davis to Salt Lake or somewhere in between. If we could make those people, if we could let those people have a home here next to their employment, that, I think, solves a lot of potential social problems, including traffic down the road. So as an overall basis, I support this. The other reason I support this project is I've always said I want to preserve ag ground. I've always kind of been a sucker for good farm ground. Some people have, you know, I always like a good field of alfalfa versus homes whenever we can. But this ground, and I know this ground, is probably not the most productive agricultural ground because it doesn't grow anything. So if we can use our unproductive ground to put homes on and save as long as we can, and again, I say as long as we can, because that will be changing over the next fifty years, but if we have the opportunity to save that ground, I think we benefit the citizens of Weaver County, and we can keep agricultural component in the county as long as possible. Weber County, and we can keep agricultural component in the county as long as possible. So, I think it gives us that opportunity. I've said this before, you've heard me say this a few times, good infrastructure makes good development. I was always the probably person in the room that questioned water, sewer, roads. I want to make it clear that Weber County, we don't have the ability to allocate water to put sewer in or to build roads for this development. That's going to come from the developer's standpoint. They're going to have to work with Weber Basin, Central Weber, the powers-to-be, UDOT, etc., to make sure the transportation elements are in, the water elements are in. Without that, this doesn't happen. I think we know that. So, what we, I think, are doing today is giving a green, if we approve this, give the green light to start that process, very long process, that gives them the ability to bring in the infrastructure that's needed for this type of development. This is not going to happen overnight. But, I want to be clear, without clear allocation of water, sewer components, and transportation, including the bridge that you mentioned, this doesn't go forward. And, I think it's a fairly aggressive move by the developers. I think that they've, from their past, they've shown, in the Utah County project, they can make this happen. I'm hopeful they can do that. And I think with the development agreement, and I've been through it a couple of times, I think the development agreement will hold their feet to the fire. The last thing I would say is, Charlie, give us, give me the history of this interaction with the planning commission. Unanimous, not unanimous?
Oh, I see. The decision was not unanimous. It was a six-to-one decision. And, let me give you the statement that the one nay vote gave. Okay, Commissioner Edwards, he was the only nay vote, he provided the following explanation. So, I just wanted to say, I do appreciate the developer, it's done great work, and I know that I've been a stick in the mud on several things, and I'm really glad I was or did it for the 1800 street alignment. He got the applicant to commit to 1800 instead of a possible 1,600. So, he's happy about that. And, he did it for the buffer, he means the DWR buffer. But, I do think overall, I'm not against the development, I just want to see that 300-foot DWR buffer. So, he wanted to see a mandatory required 300-foot buffer from DWR, and he would have been, well, based on this statement, probably would have...
So, let me just address that a second for my opinion, if I might. So, there's been some, you know, communication with DNR, DWR, in terms of that potential easement. From my understanding, and what I've seen, is they've got possibly three different alternatives to mitigate that, that's actually, that may be the benefit of the DNR, that they could mitigate, take some ground for ground. And I think the development agreement allows for that, and again, this is a state decision, not our decision, but it gives DNR and the developer an opportunity to work together, with the understanding that, and I have full faith in DNR, that they will come up with a solution, an alternative, and maybe it comes down to a purchase, maybe it comes down to an easement, but I think it's, that decision's better left to DNR and the developer to work out, rather than us tell the state what to do with, you know, potential. It doesn't give the developer an option to possibly mitigate what's best for them and what's best for the state. So, that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Harvey?
Well, commissioners, with this, there's a lot of, look, with Charlie's presentation, 13,200, unless I'm incorrect, that's about the size of the city of North Ogden. So, we're talking about a city, a new city going out west of the little Weber, and south of the railroad tracks out there, at about 1,300 south. Whole city. That's pretty substantial. And, at 1,400 acres, Charlie's calculation, we're giving them about 10 doors per acre. That's a lot, that's the highest density wheel of approved ever. I worry that it sets us up to making precedents here. Now, I realize, I've been out there and put my feet on the ground out there. I've driven along every road that I could get through across the railroad tracks, and even some I probably shouldn't have, over there, and been out there. I respect the fact, a lot of it's salt grass out there. And I, you know, I learn a lot from you, Commissioner Faur, with regards to your history and your family history of trade and property from all over this county that's out there. And I don't disagree. I like to preserve the farm ground out there. This is a good, anytime we can put stuff on salt grass that hasn't been producing agriculture is a good idea. I don't, I don't dispute that. Charlie, in this agreement, is there anything that, you talked about cradle to grave, tell me about, so I don't take this decision lightly, this is a big deal today, we're setting precedents today. Charlie, the last time we did a big development like this, and the last time we did a big development like this, we had 20%, 200 doors out at JDC were senior doors, 55-plus. Does this define the number of senior doors? I'm, I'd like to say I'm not there, but I probably am. I'm concerned about taking care of those who are transitioning in, and especially as we're not producing as many kids as we used to. I want to be thinking about tomorrow. I want to be thinking about those who are 30, or 40, or 50 years old today, and 30 to 50 years from now, they'll be 70 and 80 years old. And so, tell me, is there any parameter set around the number of doors set aside for seniors?
Nothing specifically governed in the development agreement on this one. I think that conversation came up on another project a little bit after we had gotten through that portion of the discussion. But, I will tell you, there's a couple of things that I've noticed as I've driven through the western Weber area. Some of the areas that, well, mostly areas, that don't have anything governing senior or moderate income or attainable, you'll find two-story houses and single stories slap-on grade because of the water table issues out there, houses in the same development, certainly not one-to-one.
No, uh-uh.
But, you do see them out there, I would guess it's probably closer to 1 to 10. Now, those are bigger homes. Bigger homes that may not be within the affordability realm for someone on fixed income, that is retirement age. But, they're bigger homes because they had to be bigger homes. They're bigger homes on one acre lots.
Charlie, I'm thinking about, again, that community, a beautiful little community out there in Plain City that, around the park out there, you know, the square, it's a fantastic place, they're not huge homes, but they're a great community, and every person in there loves it, and so I like that. And so, commissioners, that's important to me. And I think 20% actually is modest, compared to where we're heading. If we do the, if we listen to Kim Gardner or read any of those reports, it ought to be probably 30%. But, even at 20%, I think is modest. Charlie, look, people can't see it today, because 21st Street's a beautiful intersection off of I-50. Big and wide, and it goes west to a certain point, and then it narrows down, chokes down. And I realize that everything going further west is willing buyer, willing seller as it gets over further west. But, what people can't see today, but will realize here in a year or two, are the improvements that will be made to the existing 24th Street interchange out on the freeway. No longer will it be headed to the south, but it'll be a proper four-way intersection off of I-15. All of the mayors in Weber County have participated in this, the transportation committees, everything has, and that will be out or around 2550. To me, if we're at 12th Street, to me, that 2550 makes the best sense. I think 1800, which was bartered from 16 to 18 was a good thing, but I'd like to see some emphasis placed on the 2550 before 1800. You said either way, not the case for me. 2550 is smarter, especially, as you said, this is a 30-to-50-year build-out project, that makes much better sense. You also said that Weber County won't participate in the sewer. That also needs to say, and water. Ah, it's probably a given, we're not a water company, we don't do water. Weber County cannot make decisions based on water. It's illegal for us to make decisions based on water. But, I'd still like that in the writing, just to protect future commissions. 10 acres of open space for 1,000 residents, you've already told me, Charlie, that in your presentation, that includes the stuff along the riverbank. So, my guess is that would be 40 or so acres, you know, that, we're talking about 130 acres or 130 acres for this development. 40 of those acres will be along the river at 100 feet, another, or, no, that's not true, that would be probably about 13 acres along the river. That'd be about 40 acres if we had 300 feet along the shoreline.
Commissioner Harvey, triple that number.
Sorry? Thank you.
Yeah, triple that number. I think you're, we're looking at 10 per 1,000 people, not 10 per 1,000 units.
10 acres per 1,000 residents is what, yeah, thank you. Triple that number is correct, thank you, Charlie, because we are talking about not just having 13,200 units, but we triple that number, or about 40,000 people. So, I'm sorry, I said earlier, this is the size of North Ogden, it's really, it's the size of North Ogden and South Ogden. Thank you. Both of those cities combined, certainly not the same landmass, appreciate that, appreciate that. That's, I just wanted to make that point, I appreciate that correction. You know, again, at this density, 13,200 on 1,400 acres, we're getting a bridge out there. Commissioners, I think it would be wise for us, especially as, if we consider something, we choke that river down from 3 to 100 feet, there ought to be a requirement for a pedestrian bridge. There is enough, sorry, and I don't mean to, this is not to attack, but there's enough money in this development, they could put a pedestrian bridge over the river for the future, at a point that we decide where that would go. And it ought to be enough to be able to handle a pedestrian or some kind of equestrian type of a purpose for that. Doesn't need to carry a car or a big semi-truck, but it ought to be able to go across that As far as in the future goes, I don't think it would be fiduciarily responsible if we make, I didn't understand your part about the parks or the river, who takes care of them, if the parks don't want them and we don't want it. Does it just go to weeds? No.
So, do you want me to answer the question?
Yeah.
Okay. I've got a couple other answers for you too, but I don't want to interrupt if you've got more.
Well, I got more, but that's one I want you to talk about, because I don't want to put this, I don't want to put the maintenance of the parks on culture, parks, and recreation, because that's just going to add more money to the Weber County budget. I don't want the existing taxpayers of Weber County out of their property tax to pay any more money for that development out there, at all, ever, in perpetuity. Flooding of the Weber River, that's critical for me. Not only does it go into the bay, but it also has to make its way somehow to the Great Salt Lake, period. Must, not may, must, shall. You know, even at 100-year event, this is critical. The last thing we're going to do is put another concrete canal in somewhere. You know what I mean, or the taxpayers have to do that. The no-climb fence along the shoreline's a great idea, I hope that stays in no matter where that fence goes. And I, you need to understand where the property line is now, and I want the people to hear, if they go back and look at this another time. You know, when I was a boy, I remember you could buy property out there for less than $100 an acre. I remember in the 70s out that area, hundred bucks an acre. And, that was in the 70s, but the DNR, the DWR bought property out there back in the 20s or the 30s, somewhere in there?
By the time frame?
Yeah, that had to be, yeah, I don't know what they paid back there, I didn't have time to look that up, but they set that boundary where that boundary was for a specific reason, as it related to waterfowl management. But, I know, I realize, we're not going to get this back. I'm kind of a, although I haven't been hunting for a while, I'm an upland game bird, and the law is that you can't shoot within 600 feet. I want to be, just, I want to make sure that we get another 300 feet along that shoreline, if at all possible. Now, I know in the writings here, we put that the DNR, DWR, working with the locals and the developer, which I think is a great concession they've made to work with them over the next year. That's so important to me, because we'll never get this back, especially if there's a no-climb fence. That'll be the, that'll be the thing. The 200-foot buffer along the highway. I want to make sure that, because I think, and you've taught me this, Commissioner Faur, there are right now six, people think, well, the new Western Weber corridor, or the new legacy highway, or whatever you want to call that. There are six possible routes that could come through Weber County, six. None of them have been defined, there's no environmental study out there. People say, well, this is where it's going to go, they don't know what they're talking about. Because we don't know, there are six different places it could go. So, we need to make sure in this development agreement, that that 200-foot buffer can go six different places, not just where they design it to go. That's pretty simple, pretty easy. This is, Charlie, you've given us a lot of opportunity to study this. I didn't really realize or put the numbers together, although I've done a lot of talking with other people about this, but 40,000 people out in that area, that's massive. Except for Ogden City, and then maybe West Haven, I don't know what their population is. This is massive. This is a massive amount of density. Really changes a lot of the focus. I want to go back to that 2550 discussion. There's nowhere else along the Wasatch Front that has a real city center like Ogden. I mean, everybody, when they go on a trip to somewhere, where are you from? They say, well, they're from Harrisville, you're going to say, oh, I'm from Ogden. Everybody says Ogden, that's because the train came to Ogden, you know? We're not going to change 160 years ago history. Ogden. That's what I would imagine would happen, and that's why 2550, which will end up being right there at that corner, if you line up 2550, I'm so, I'm pretty hard on that. So, Commissioner, those are my comments. Again, as I said yesterday, and people can watch that, if we're going to give up from 300 feet along the river to 100 feet, I think a concession, a more strong concession needs to be made as far as the shoreline, for the upland game people. The upland game, I'm concerned about never getting that back. I respect the comments from the planning commission, they've done so much work out there. They've done so much work, and of the people, the members that are on that planning commission, they're generational there too. They're, they know what's going on out there. And so, I want to respect their decisions too, but we never get this back. This is absolutely huge. And notwithstanding, this acreage that we're talking about out there, 14, is not in totality. You know, along 30 to 50 years, there's a lot more acreage out there than 1,400. So, there could be more. We're talking even bigger. This stretches from Hooper all the way over to that railroad track and could continue to migrate further north. So, this is a big thing for me, I'm taking it very seriously. Madam Chair, you've given me a time to go off for a long time. Thank you so much. I appreciate it, you're sitting there so reverent with your arms folded, I just, thanks for letting me go off on this diatribe.
Charlie, I think you have some responses to some of those questions or concerns.
I do, hopefully, hopefully answers more than responses. Emphasizing 2550 over 1800, you're right, the development agreement, actually, it says at the developer's option, we negotiated that way because we weren't quite... we weren't quite sure whether you were going to have willing buyers in both areas, um, eighteen hundred or twenty-five fifty. We're pretty sure right now, we've got, um, or not willing buyer, willing sellers. We've got a willing seller on twenty-five fifty. Eighteen hundred, we think, um, there's consensus, but there still are pieces of property that will need to be purchased that we know maybe one or two landowners.
That doesn't matter to me, Charlie. That doesn't matter to me. That just is, has to do with price.
Okay.
The right thing is the right thing here, right? So I'll be that as it may.
Okay. And that'll be a really quick and simple adjus, uh, adjustment in the development agreement. Um, instead of saying either or, um, it's already written away where we say we're calling it First River Bridge Street and Second River Bridge Street, just in the development agreement, um, and letting the applicant choose which one works best. We just changed that to say First River Bridge Street is twenty-five fifty, Second River Bridge Street is eighteen hundred.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, okay, there's that one. Let's see. Uh, county won't provide water. It's written that way.
Okay.
In the, both, both culinary and secondary water now.
The presentation just said sewer.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, as far as secondary goes, if I recall correctly, we are encouraging, uh, them not to not create a secondary system, but rather to provide, um, culinary for those secondary purposes.
Say that again into the mic.
Uh, sorry, to, to not provide, uh, secondary water system, but to, um, have secondary water through the culinary water service. Now, um, that's obviously going to be up to the service provider. Um, if it's Warren, Wes Warren, they've, they've got their, uh, own standards on, on how to make that work.
But we're not requiring it.
But we're not going to require it, no. In fact, we're going to try and encourage a secondary system to not happen. We're going to try and encourage that to be consolidated.
What about for these, what about for these parks? Would the secondary system be necessary for all this open space?
So not, not necessarily. You could irrigate a park with culinary service. Uh, and a lot of jurisdictions do that. A lot of jurisdictions use, um, uh, just their treated water to irrigate those park areas. Now, that said, the applicant is also committed to, um, the desert scape that is out there. They are going to zero scape. Now, zero scape doesn't mean no irrigation, um, and it doesn't mean no planting. We definitely want planting. We want to avoid the urban heat island effect. We want street trees, all of those things. Uh, so you could get a lot of green out there still, but zero scaping is low water. So for the most part, you shouldn't see overhead sprinkling, uh, sprinkling in that community with the exception of those park fields. So, any questions about that? Okay. Water, uh, river into weeds. Let's, uh, yeah, good, good question. Uh, I apologize if I wasn't clear. Um, my statement was more to say that there is no force on the county and no force on the park district to take over any of this, um, public, or, uh, yeah, uh, open space property. But if we don't, that remains the applicants to take care of. Uh, that means their HOA or the community foundation, someone needs to take care of that open space. That is.
I would like that in the writings, they must take care of, not should, or shall, not may.
It says that.
Okay.
Yep. In fact, the applicant wanted it to say that, because they don't want a community that has open spaces going to waste either. They've got fifty years of sales that they've got to, uh, market, and, and if they've got gross looking open space areas, it's just a lot harder to sell in that kind of a community. Um, this is a master planned amenitized, amenity incentivized, excuse me, uh, community, and, and I think they want to market it that way. Uh, taxpayer protection. Uh, we don't want, um, any part of this project to become a taxpayer burden. Agreed. Hundred percent agreed. Uh, the development agreement is written that way to say that if there is an inordinate burden, uh, coming out of this project that, uh, would otherwise be saddled on the existing taxpayers, that the applicant, the HOA, someone needs to offset that, um, uh, that cost difference. There's also a provision in the, uh, agreement that says that, um, they agree to not protest a new tax, a new tax or a new taxing entity, uh, either tax or, or taxing entity. So if for some reason the county is not satisfied that the existing taxpayers are not fully protected, the county can, and they agree to participate and not protest, um, uh, create a, a, a new tax or tax unit or tax entity, uh, district or whatever, to, uh, provide for those additional services that are costing them money, whether that be snow plowing or parts maintenance or whatever it may be. Um, my goal, just from a planning perspective, despite the fact that the county and the unincorporated area is looking at urbanized development, uh, my goal and the general plan's goal is to find ways to incentivize that to incorporate or to be annexed into a city at some point in the future. Um, I think one of the best ways to do it is to, uh, apply, uh, a financial burden on, uh, the applicant and/or the people who move into that project, that is whatever they would pay in a municipality plus one. And that'll get them wanting in the future to say, let's get that minus one by incorporating or by annexing. Um, and talking to the developer, they are actually interested in looking down, you know, ten, ten, twenty years down the road at, uh, potentially incorporating the, the project into a city. Um, so that was my long way of saying, the river should not be full of weeds. Uh, that will be their response. I don't want them to take care of it, and, uh, taxpayers won't have the burden of taking care of that or any other aspect of the project, assuming everything goes to plan. I, uh, I don't want to eat my words on that in the future. Flood mitigation, very important. They think it's very important. Our engineer thinks it's very important, very concerned about that. Uh, one thing I didn't mention in my presentation, the development agreement requires them, as a very first step before any development happens, they have to provide a drainage plan, uh, drainage and flood mitigation plan for the project. We've asked them to do it on a community-wide basis. We think that makes sense for them. Financially, it's a lot of cost upfront. There's a lot of engineering that will go into that upfront, but we think in the long run, we're not going to be looking at piecemealing, uh, uh, drainage system, uh, together for this future city. We're going to be looking at a, cause, uh, a cohesive drainage, uh, system where everything works together to make sure that, uh, we get water out of that community, uh, or through the community as, as quickly as possible, um, or in reservoirs or detention facilities or, or whatnot. So, and that flood mitigation plan and the drainage, uh, drainage and flood mitigation plan, we call it, call it stormwater and flood mitigation, uh, has to be approved by the county engineer, uh, before it's determined complete. So, uh, what it does is it basically gives, uh, through the, through the development agreement, you guys are giving the county engineer the authority to, um, approve a, a stormwater and flood mitigation plan as long as it meets best practices, and we do say best practices. So, um, Gary's very interested in that. He really wanted that to go in there, um, uh, so that Engineering Division really has a lot of, a lot of pull in how that's shaped. Okay? Um, that's, that comes at their expense, even though we'll review and, and, uh, sign off on it once it meets whatever standard Gary wants it to meet. One thing I didn't mention, but Commissioner Harvey, you were talking about upland, um, game. Uh, we are applying the, uh, county's outdoor lighting ordinance to the project. I know we've been applying that to most of the other rezones out west as well. This one in particular is going to be important, not just because of the density, not just because it's going to be a future city, but because it's so close to that urban refuge, uh, that, that WMA. Um, those are, the migrating birds, there's some evidence to suggest that city lights really affect migratory patterns. And so the more that we can direct those lights down and turn them down, uh, the better off, uh, those, uh, the, the waterfowl would be out in that area. Uh, the highway buffer, uh, really good observation. It needs to have some flexibility on where it could go, not just be right here. You're right. The agreement doesn't actually, uh, what's the word? Doesn't survey in, uh, where that needs to be. What it actually does is it says that highway, uh, both of those highways, uh, the two hundred foot and the three hundred foot wide, uh, byway and hi, and highway, um, need to be in a location as agreed to by the county. And so as we work with UDOT, if UDOT says, no, the highway's not even going to go through this property, um, then we know that, well, we've got a three hundred foot wide stretch that a county highway could go in if we wanted to, and it needs to be configured to support a limited access freeway, uh, and in a location as acceptable to the county. So there is, uh, flexibility on how, where exactly that's going to be located. I know the applicant has some idea on what geometry they want to see, because their geometry puts a good swoop in and gives them enough space between that future freeway and the river to provide some pretty cool, um, uh, commercial and retail amenities in there. Um, but at the end of the day, the county has to agree to where that line is, and we're going to want to work with UDOT on that to make sure we're in the right spot. And if UDOT says, sorry, completely wrong spot, we're, we're staying, uh, east of the river, uh, county has a, a nice spot that we can put a, a, a county byway of some sort. Uh, which, uh, by the way, within that corridor, the county through the agreement is agreeing that the developer can build surface streets that support their development in there.
But no more density?
No. Oh, sorry. Let me, yeah, let me rephrase. The density doesn't go up if they do develop inside of that three hundred foot wide corridor, if we were to give it up or whatever, um, that's still required to be open space in perpetuity. So you've got a beautiful, open, um, corridor for parks, uh, a nice big linear park with trails that can go down and trees and whatnot, um, right through the middle of that community, if they wanted to develop it with more density or by moving around their density, they'd have to come back to you in the amendments agreement and get your consent first. Uh, so still an opportunity, but it's a negotiation that you guys have full control over. Um, but what I meant by that was they can put their own streets within that three hundred foot, uh, highway corridor and within the two hundred foot wide byway corridor, uh, that provides surface access to those subdivisions. If a freeway is ever to be built in those corridors, that, that street would probably be the, um, frontage street, uh, for those highways. The agreement is written in a way that says that those streets, if they build them, have to hug the outside edge of that corridor, so we're not having to rebuild streets in the future. I mean, we've seen I-15 evolve and turn into something, uh, uh, over the years through Salt Lake County that, uh, is, is different than it was, uh, you know, in the seventies. Um, and you could see those side streets as they widened those highways, those side streets move and get bumped out just a little bit more, a little bit more, a little bit more. We want them to put it in the right location so that UDOT doesn't have to build that road several times. We're seeing it over on the Riverdale Road off ramp. I mean, how many different times have they built that road that goes in front of, uh, was that Qatar Center or whatever that's called, right? That, that little shopping complex there? Um, how many more times are they going to have to build it before it's in the right spot?
Freeway Park is the name of that street.
Freeway Park, okay. Um, forty thousand people? Yes, a, a lot of people. Um, only comment, uh, I wanted to possibly make on this is that forty thousand is going to be based on, um, the county's growth. Uh, that'll be based on whether or not, uh, our fertility rates stay the same, whether or not our economy grows or shrinks. Um, and so we'd be looking a lot at what is the market doing based off of human behavior. Um, so that forty thousand, it's not forty thousand new, it's forty thousand of the total Weber County pie fifty years from now. Um, it's just, instead of being forty thousand spread out on the farm fields or maybe within other cities, it's forty thousand out there in, in that location. So there's pros and cons, definitely pros and cons to, uh, to density. Uh, but one of the pros being if you, if you create a, a, a vacuum on that market where you're sucking in, uh, new landowners and, and new, uh, uh, business owners and whatnot into that, uh, centralized location out there, uh, you're freeing up spaces for, well, I like to tell people, it just means that apartment complex doesn't need to be located in my backyard, because there's somewhere else for it to go.
Pedestrian bridge.
Oh, yes, thank you. I missed that one. Um, we actually, uh, very much along the lines of what the Planning Commission asked for on the, um, Bennett project, where they asked for, um, uh, two pedestrian bridges going over the river, um, we, we added that provision into this agreement as well. I know the Planning Commission expressed a little bit of, um, regret of not making sure that that was in their recommendation to you guys after the fact, when they were looking at the Bennett project, they thought, man, we should probably should have put this into that other agreement, um, with the opportunity right now to put it in. We talked to the applicant about that, and, um, they're comfortable with it.
Charlie, and to be clear, I want it separated from whatever bridge they're going to build for road. I don't want that to be in conjunction with or have that satisfy.
Yep.
Uh, if, I want it to be separated, a detached, separated bridge from the auto bridge or transportation.
And I did talk to the applicant about that as well. They had that question. I said, no, this is not a bridge that's on twenty-five fifty. It's not a bridge that's on eighteen hundred. These are, uh...
And maybe there will be one of those too, but this is in addition to.
This is in addition to that. Yep, exactly.
In fact, they need to be, on, on any bridge they bring over twenty-five fifty, uh, eighteen hundred, clear out whatever you're going to cross the railroad, pedestrian bridges need to be, active transportation needs to be included on that, especially if, I mean, that's a shall again, especially when you're talking density even close like this.
Yep.
You know, without hesitation.
Yep, absolutely. In fact, if you were to turn to the cross-sections that they'd be responsible for maintaining both up to the project as well as through the project, every single one of those bigger streets have a multi-use pathway adjacent to it. And so, yes, each, each one of those car bridges will need to have a pathway.
And so, and, and in this too, I'm sure there's a commercial, there's some, and I, let me back up. Madam Chair, if I can continue. Thanks. I know that they were, they talked about having a right-of-way against the railroad track or immediately on the south side of the railroad track, the UP main line that's out there for the future of a front-runner type of a train with a couple of stops out there.
That's my last note. Perfect. Um, yes, we have asked for a right-of-way corridor, uh, forty feet of the northern portion of that property. We did a little bit of research to verify that a forty feet will be enough for a, a, a two, um, track system. Uh, it will be. If you combine the forty feet with the right-of-way that is already in existence on Indian Pacific, you'll have, you'll have more than enough space there. We didn't want to make it too wide, because we didn't want a, a huge space that somebody had to maintain in the long term, uh, but wide enough that you get good active transportation facilities inside of that corridor and good transit facility, uh, the potential for good transit facilities. We're just looking to carve out opportunity for the future, not necessarily mandatory requirement. We're not making them build BRT or light rail.
No.
This is just looking to UDOT and UTA saying, we have space for you in the most logical location. You don't have to tear houses down. You don't have to, uh, remove things. The bridges are going to be, the bridges that go over the railroad are going to be wide enough to accommodate, uh, an underpass on, on these things. We did specifically write that down in there, um, so that future transit can go under all that infrastructure in the future and, um, and the taxpayers don't have to pay the extra cost of tearing things down and ruining things.
You know, all these things you'd think is very comprehensive, but, uh, and, and I appreciate that. And, and also, I'm sure, within all that density, with that many, with that many people out there, I'm sure there's places for, uh, a big, a Lowe's or a Home Depot, uh, a Wang's Guards, I'm sorry, a Wang's Guard, Associated Foods, uh, a place to get some pizza or Chinese food and catch your hair and, and things like that. And, and that, that goes without saying, which just means the amount of density or the amount of, we're talking about, uh, really apartments or, or condos. Is there any requirement in any of this that's homeowner occupied? Because I, I want to really watch out for, if we're trying to, as Commissioner Faur said, and he gave us that little walk down memory lane of fifty years ago and the expansion, is there any requirement for homeowner occupied in there, Charlie?
There's not right now. Uh, the reason why we didn't put it in there is we felt like the market, um, in this particular case, given the amount of density, um, is, is going to govern a lot of that. Uh, in this community, it's not a resort-oriented community. We're probably not going to see a lot of outside investment in second homes here. Um, and so the answer is no. No specific requirement. We can add it in if you want us to. Um, the applicant, instead of that, has a different proposal, and it is in the development agreement, um, and they're calling it Flex Homes. It's actually a really cool product. I think we briefly touched on this. Um, very similar to what's going on in that JDC Ranch, just a little bit different flavor. If we were to turn to, well...
And, and by virtue, Madam Chair, I don't want to flesh that out right now. Thanks, Charlie.
Okay.
By virtue of that, Madam Chair, if you, I'd like to make a motion.
Oh.
Yeah, after, after, yeah.
Okay. You, the two of you have covered a lot, and Charlie, in your responses, but, um, a couple of things. I, I do appreciate the, the variety within the development, um, the variety of housing. I think that's become so important. Um, and I don't have as much experience as you two do, but in my experience, um, everyone doesn't have the same, um, the same appetite for the same size of lots. And so I think that's really important. I also appreciate, appreciate the buffer. You did mention that, um, that the, the subdivisions, I guess, or the build would be market-based, market-driven. Um, I want to make sure, it's important to me that even if the market doesn't necessarily call for those larger lots at the time, I want to make sure we preserve that buffer that's, that is, um, part of the, part of this development agreement. The buffer's important because... The buffer's important, because those bordering, uh, properties may want larger, larger lots, and we need to stay true to that, I think. Um, I did a little quick research on, just appreciating the size of this and the magnitude of this project. Research on West Haven, when West Haven incorporated thirty-four years ago, there were, um, two thousand, uh, residents, and they're at almost twenty-five thousand now. That's thirty-four years, so I think that speaks to the, the length of this project. It's not gonna be built out in the next ten years. Thirty-four years into West Haven, it's grown by twenty-one thousand people. So it is a long-term project, and I think we need to recognize that. And there's a lot of value in planning this. To my knowledge, the first general plan of West Haven was a little bit of commercial and then acre lots. And so looking at, at how that plan's evolved over the years and to accommodate other things, um, different types of commercial and, and different sizes of lots, wow, if we have an opportunity to do that right now all at once, then I think that there's a lot of value in that, to recognize what the future's going to bring. So I appreciate that. Um, the rest of my notes have been covered, so I am ready for a motion, if you would like to make one, Commissioner Harvey.
Madam Chair, I'd like to table this until we get to a little more, which, I wanna take a deeper dive into what this Flex Homes is. I'd like to hear a little more about, uh, my concern along the shoreline, and I also would like to, uh, talk about the, the requirement for senior doors. Those, that's really important to me, and I don't know if that's gonna affect the amount of units or doors in total, but I'd like to flush those things out, whether that's, I, I know, the great thing is, is, uh, how many times did the Planning Commission hear this? How many different times?
Nine, nine different, uh, oh, ten different meetings, two, uh, one public hearing, uh, one public meeting, rest of them were sessions.
Wow, that's a, that's a, just a, a gob of time that they've spent. I really appreciate that. I also appreciate them forwarding that to us with the, with the majority vote to us. But I'd like to flush those few things out, so I'd like to, Madam Chair, I'd like to table it for a few weeks, not a few months, uh, but just so that I can get a better understanding on at least those things, minimum.
And I think to add, the, the changes, Charlie, that you were taking note of, saying that would be an easy change, we can make that, and that, that will give us a chance to look at those changes implemented in the, in the document, too, as well.
Thank you.
So is that a motion to table?
A motion to table, yeah.
It looks like I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay, the motion carries two to one.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Okay, before we adjourn, I know we were running late, but I just wanted to make a correction on something that you mentioned, Commissioner Harvey, in your Commissioner comments. That was the hours of the fair. It used to be eleven to eleven all days, but Wednesday and Thursday, it's noon to ten. For those who watched this afterward and may have made it to the end of the meeting, noon to ten on Wednesday and Thursday, and eleven to eleven on Friday and Saturday. So, with that, we'll go to item H.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.